You're tuned into Black Hollywood Live, the world's first digital broadcast network devoted entirely to urban entertainment and pop culture. Tune in right now.
Hey, what's up, Antonio? How you doing, man?
I'm doing well. How's everything with you?
Oh, man, I can't complain. We're happy to have you in here. I got my co-host Courtney joining me as well today.
Hello, hello.
Hey, Courtney, thanks for having me today. I really appreciate it.
Welcome, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
I feel like, you know, I need to get my Georgia card because Courtney's from Georgia, you know.
ATL.
You represent ATL. I'm from Ohio, so I, you know, I'm the odd man out in this team.
No, you gotta come down to Atlanta. It's everything right now.
I know it is. I know it is.
Yeah.
And congratulations to you, Atlanta's District Three Councilman. I mean, 2019, you're killing it right now.
Oh, thanks so much. I appreciate it. Just, just following my spirit and where God takes me, so.
I hear that.
Yeah.
I hear that, man. That's a, that's a great path to have.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, you know, you and I, we've been kind of following each other for a while, and I've been watching a lot of things that you've been doing, man. So I'm excited to have you on the show today and talk about a lot of things that are going on currently for black folks and around the world and Atlanta. But before I even get into that, man, I gotta talk about this, this previous history of you having a Level 13 fashion line that you started that, you know, I'm like, first of all, where are my samples of the clothing?
I know.
I know they're, I know they're in Nordstroms and everything, but where are my, where are my samples? You know, I'm a size large to medium, you know, so I'm just saying.
Large to medium.
You like that? The reverse.
Yeah, no, I do like that. Yeah, you know, I, I moved to Atlanta back in February of 2013. I've been here a little over seven years and I started this brand with Jason Derulo. Actually, I started it and I brought Jason Derulo on and it was really, you know, I didn't really have experience in fashion and it was just something that I really believed in and had faith in and, you know, you know, it kind of started off really crazy. I ended up launching the brand with a lawsuit against Louis Vuitton for trademark infringement. So it was, it's, it's been a journey and thank God that the brand was able to get inside of Bloomingdale's and Nordstrom's because I think that it kind of set this precedence for like young designers to have hope that you can do whatever you want to do as long as you maintain your faith and your actions are a reflection of what you seek in life, that you can make anything happen. And that was really like, for me, one of the greatest benefits of doing what I was doing was that it was really allowing other designers to see the possibilities.
That's, I mean.
Beautiful perfection.
That's what I'm saying. I'm like, just to be young and to start that, you know, to have that, to have that drive at such a young age too is really amazing too.
Oh, well, thank you. It's been tough though. I've had to since making the, I don't know if many folks know, most people don't even know my story because they just know me at the point of politics or city council. But, you know, I ended up launching a college curriculum inside of all of the art institutes nationwide. Did a whole national tour around our colleges where I developed a small business entrepreneurship program and it became a required course for the art institutes. And then from there, I launched a nonprofit organization that focused around education empowerment. And then from there, I ended up getting into politics and since getting into politics, I've had to put the brand down because it's just such a consuming responsibility.
Yeah, I would imagine I'm like, oh, go ahead, Courtney.
No, I was just gonna say, you, that's such a transition, like over time and how just the importance of the educational part of entrepreneurship. Where did your education of entrepreneurship come from that gave you the, the confidence even to jump into the fashion industry, not having that much experience to begin with?
Well, it's really interesting. Google, Forbes wrote an article about that specific question. And, you know, I started the fashion brand through Google. I Googled how to start a fashion brand and I kind of followed it and researched and did my due diligence because I didn't know how to draw and I'd never been in the industry before. So I brought on board a tattoo artist that was a friend of mine and I took the thoughts of what I had in my head around like visualizing and depicting the fashion that I was looking to create. And it started with sneakers and he literally like listened to me and took notes and then started designing and we started curating this entire brand around that. And, but it all started from Google really and, and even, you know, I dropped out of high school at the age of 15. My parents were incarcerated for five years when I was 12 years old. And, and I dropped out of high school to help take care of my brothers and sisters. So my first job was a grocery sacker at Kroger's and I was homeschooling myself at the same time. So, you know, it's been, it's been an interesting journey because I don't come from a traditional educational background, nor do I have a degree. And, you know, I, I believe in divine purpose and divine order. And I, I think it's exactly where God needed me to be to show our generation that you don't have to go to college to be successful. And, you know, you can come from really tough background, environments, conditions, and you can still overcome those obstacles and, and, and those hardships and that adversity. And you can still manifest into existence everything that you seek in your life.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
I think, I think you just took us to church, man. I'm ready, I'm ready for Sunday sermon.
I'm not sure I could give you that, but.
I don't know. I think you, I think you, I think that's another path for you. I'm ready.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not ready for that one. I had some pastors tell me before, they're like, Antonio, you know, we definitely think you have so, you know, so, so pastor qualities, but maybe not in the church, outside of the church. And I'm like, good, that's exactly where I'll be, outside of the church.
Outside the church. Well, I know since you have become the councilman, you strive to make some big changes over there in Atlanta and Georgia. And I mean, obviously Atlanta has been in the news a lot in the last several months. It's been a tough time for all of us as black people. And there's been stories, obviously with, you know, with Georgia, with Ahmaud Arbery and Richard Brooks and, and, you know, such the list goes on and on of things that have just been happening across the country. But what would you say is the current move for black folks right now in Atlanta?
No justice, no peace.
Yeah.
Period. You know, and the reality is, I, I believe that our, our, our people are realizing their power. You know, you know, when you've suppressed a fashion of people for over 400 years and, you know, you've made them feel as though they're less than who they truly are, then it becomes really difficult, you know, for people to reprogram that programming that they were kind of born into, like a lot of us, a lot of our generation. We were born into this system that programmed us to believe and to, to have this like, this mindset that, you know, we are those 400 years and that we are not greater than that. And they've done everything, the institution of this construct that's, you know, I call it the, the construct of the religious era. This construct that was built on religion, I mean, it's so unfortunate because it's killed more black people than, than police officers have. And, you know, the reality is, is that our people have to wake up and that's what's happening right now. What you see is an elevation of consciousness in the world. And that elevation of consciousness is really propelling our, our, our black people and our black and brown people in this country to wake the hell up. Because, you know, we, we have allowed ourselves to be in this oppressive state for far too long, that we've lost sight of who God has intended us to be in this world. I mean, if you think about black culture, we created memes, we created hip hop, we created a lot of what you see in society today. We were the creators of it. So we are a powerful force of people. And I think the mood is now getting back to who we, who we, who we've always been, but just have been unconsciously aware of it.
Yeah.
That's facts. Well, being a part of, so there's a movement, there's an awakening period in people in general. But we also, obviously, we live in the United States, we have our government, currently quite partisan government. How do you see, as you've come up, obviously, in politics and working on the city council, how do you see the sort of government's role in either closing that gap of partisanship? Is it something that needs to be completely deconstructed so that we can start from scratch? Like, how do you see the role of government in this new awakening and time period that, what their role would be or should be?
You know, that's a really great question. I don't see, for me, in my perspective, government has no role in that. The people have the role in that. And again, this goes back to our people realizing our power and our ability. And this awakening that is happening is not for government to come around to realizing that they have a, a, a fiduciary responsibility to black people, black and brown people. It's our responsibility because I said the other day on CNN as well as MSNBC, the reality is, you know, you all have invited us to have a seat at the table and, and we, we, we have, some of us have politely agreed and, and taken that seat at the table. But things are changing. We no longer want a seat at the table. We are the table. And we're now inviting government to take a seat at this table because the reality is, we are already dismantling this system. And I grew up Jehovah Witness most of my life, so I didn't grow up understanding Democrats and, and Republicans, you know, or any kind of partisanship. I didn't grow up under those dynamics or those guys. So for me, you know, it's never been about that. It's always been about the people. And I think that's why I've had so much success as a, as an elected official is because I approach things from a different perspective and it's rooted in the people. And when you are rooted in the people, you have the ability to affect change at a law, at a much greater level. Because like for me, I'm not caught into the politics of things. Like I had a conversation with Governor Kemp and, you know, one of the first things I said in that, in our conversation when he called me was, hey, I don't give a damn that you're a Republican, you know? I don't care about, you know, this whole Democrat and Republican divide. What I care about is humanity and how do we get back to humanity? How do we get back to the issues of the people?
I, I agree with that. I, I do have a fear though, Antonio, because I'm hoping that everything that's happening right now will translate at the polls when it's time to vote. Because there still is a strong chance that under our current government, that, that same person can return again. And I don't think we can take another four years of this. Do you think that it'll translate at the polls this time?
So, I don't, I don't know. So, you know, I'm not sure how many will be able to relate to what I'm, what I'm getting ready to say. You know, I'm not sure what the future is going to hold for democracy in America. But what I am confident in is that I know that the people are rising to the occasion and, and will get, get to the polls and do their part, their civic responsibility of engaging in our, our government, both locally and federally, to ensure that our voices are heard. We, 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 you know, I've been working with Little Baby and brought him into this social justice movement. And he's also been leveraging his platform to, you know, really support this movement around registering folks to vote. Because a lot of the people that listen to his music aren't registered to vote, don't engage in the civic process or any of those things. And he's really been leveraging his platform to really get his fans and the people that listen to him to be more civically engaged. So I, as much as I believe that that is happening and that the people will rise to the occasion, you know, I have mixed feelings about the whole Donald Trump situation. I think that, you know, I see, I see him and, and the part he's played in this as a much needed aspect of reshaping government. I mean, you know, he's, he has created conversations that I think had we gone with the same type of democratic leadership we've had in the past, things would have continued to be complacent. And I don't think that they will, they would have been propelled or perpetuated the way that they have been. I mean, think about it, like, you know, before Donald Trump, racists were racist behind your back. They would smile on your face and, and call you a nigger behind your back and you wouldn't even know that they hated you, you know? Now, you know, it's a, it's, it's more of a, a direct. Oh, yeah. And it's a more of a direct like, hey, this is how I feel. And what I think is amazing about that is that it forces humanity to have conversations that we wouldn't have normally had, where we would have been complacent in the ideals of, hey, we know racism exists, you know, but we're gonna go ahead and tread lightly along racism. No, Trump has forced us to have these conversations in an open forum and have us address them head on. And, and I think that he's contributed to a lot of conversations like that. I don't agree with, you know, a lot of his narrative. I don't agree with a lot of just kind of his rhetoric. I don't believe in a lot of that, but I do appreciate the conversations that have occurred. And listen, humanity will continue to prevail. We will continue to elevate our consciousness. We'll continue to elevate in this country. And, and I mean, Atlanta is a perfect example of it, you know? When you think about, we're not here waiting for people to give us the change that we see. We're, we're going out and taking that change by all means necessary. And that is ensuring that we go above and beyond to make sure our communities are registered to vote, to ensure that, you know, the folks that represent us are a reflection of our communities, to ensure that our public safety is a reflection of our communities. We're going out and doing those things. We're not waiting for a city council. We're not waiting for a mayor. We're not waiting for a governor. We're going out and getting what we know we deserve.
Yeah.
Well, similar to how Trump has kind of opened this conversation in a different way about how we view government and things like that, I think for me at least, COVID-19 has been a moment to sort of look at also how we treat our education system because we are forced to be, you know, students are being forced to look at education from virtual opportunities and things like that in ways that maybe we hadn't before. Do you think that, just because you have, obviously, had quite a bit of experience in education, can you speak a little bit to what you would like to see happen just in terms of public education in this country? Because Atlanta, Georgia in general has not always been the greatest at their public education. And obviously, we've seen our community struggle in the public education department and it seems to be going even further in a negative direction as time is going by. So what would you like to see happen or how do you think it's gonna come out on the other side as we're facing like the point that we can't just go back into the classroom like we normally would?
Yeah, no, that is a great question. And, you know, I'm gonna speak in general, not just around education, but everything in general and education is a component of it. But, you know, the beautiful thing about what COVID-19 did, COVID-19 forced the elevation of humanity. And I say that because, think about it, before COVID-19, we weren't talking about telework services. We, we weren't talking about how engaged were our parents in our education growing up? They weren't. They were too busy working. COVID-19 has forced parents to be more engaged, to be the teacher in the classroom, but also to be the parent and to be the, the inspiration to continue for them to see something different. It's also forced us in how we learn, like telework services. Telework now will, will become the new thing in every aspect, education, meetings, employment. And, and if you think about it, we should have been there. Who wants to be cramped up in a classroom? Or who wants to be cramped up in an office space and, and, and you tell us you want us to be creative and learn? Yet you force us into these tight classrooms and, and you try to, you know, spew on all of this, this knowledge to us, this history to us, but it's not done in an innovative space. And I think that's what COVID-19 has done. It's really forced us to relook at how we see the future of not just education, but how we see the future of government, how we see the, the future of our corporations, how we see our involvement, how we see our parents' involvement, how do we engage on multiple levels when it comes to learning and, and being productive in environments? They, I, I can't remember the stats, but they said that since the telework services and since everything that has happened since COVID-19, they've seen productivity in the workplace skyrocket. And when you think about it, it makes sense because it's kind of like, yeah, duh, it's gonna skyrocket because you're not forcing them into these cubicles or into these office spaces, you know, giving them an hour lunch break and saying, you gotta be back here at this time and we want you to be creative and putting them in these environments that are so restrictive. You're now giving them the opportunity and the freedom to be creative, to think, to manage their schedules, to be productive, to be involved with their kids and their education and their learning environment and conditions. Those are all things we should have been moving into as a country.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of people tell me that they've been more productive being at home, like you were saying, versus the being in the office. And just, you know, even just, just the amount of work that they get done at certain periods is different than what they were at the office.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, you know, when we look at education for our kids and, you know, even for like when I think about high school and I think about, you know, college, you know, I think one of the things even with, when I got into the space with my entrepreneurship program, I looked at more of a hands-on approach to education, like where we're not just talking to the students, teaching to the students that we're creating an environment that's going to allow the participation of the students. And while they're participating, they are learning. And those environments really weren't as prevalent in education. And, and when you did see those environments, they were in private institutions. So it really did not impact our public education system. And that is something that I think has always been missing. And I also think that, you know, kind of just the idea of what we're teaching our students. I mean, even with the social justice movement here, why aren't we teaching about our black history in a way that goes beyond just the surface level of Black History Month? Like, why aren't we teaching black history throughout the year? Why aren't we teaching, you know, about figures in our history that are not just your Malcolm X's and your Martin Luther King Juniors that were black innovators, black inventors, black entrepreneurs, black Wall Street? Why aren't we teaching about these fundamentals that aren't just for our black and brown communities, but also to help educate our, our white communities and help them to see something beyond the privilege in which they, many were, 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 were born into? And, 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 and teaching them how to leverage their privilege to lift up our black and brown communities.
Yeah, and I think this is giving it that shift though, because now we see the corporations, you know, participating in that now to make sure that history is starting to be shown. I, I have white counterparts and friends who have now realized the importance of a lot of the black history that they feel like they've never known and been exposed to in all of their lives. So I feel like there is a shift now that that will be something in the future that hopefully will manifest even more. Because obviously, there's so many people out there that, that need to be highlighted in, in our black history that have not. But I feel like this is the moment where that shift is finally starting to come.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, I mentioned this to Governor Kemp when we talked. I said, you know, you have a rare opportunity right now to build allies. And not only build allies, but you have a rare opportunity to inspire the people that, that follow you, that support you, that vote for you, that a lot of times come from this, this background of white privilege. You have the ability to inspire them to see something different, see something outside of the environments and conditions they grew up in and only knowing, you know? And, and as leaders, we all have that responsibility a lot of times, you know? And, and I, I believe we don't always exercise it as leaders. We don't always, you know, utilize that privilege to better the communities or reshape the perspectives of communities that may be disengaged from the realities that are transpiring in our black and brown communities.
Absolutely. And speaking of inspiration and leadership, I know that you are making a lot of changes there in Atlanta. What has been something that after, you know, in the last year that you are very just excited about and just most proud of as far as like a change that you've made in the system?
Oh, I've made so many.
What's your, but you have, right? What's one of your favorites?
One of my favorites is, let me think, because I have so many favorites. One of my favorites, I would say.
So many.
I, I do. You know, I'm very, I'm a very passionate person. So everything I do becomes a passion project. And, and I think that's why I get so much done is because I'm so passionate about it that I don't allow anything to stop me. But one of the first programs that I introduced coming onto city council was, I created a community loan fund for credit disadvantaged small businesses. And it got, it got national attention because it was one of the first community loan funds to be established in the nation with the criteria that we, we built into it. And, and it's basically a loan for credit disadvantaged small businesses where they can borrow up to $50,000. It's a 3% fixed interest rate on the loan and it's a three-month deferment on their first payment. And they can take up to 30,000 of the 50,000 and they can pay down personal debt that they sustained while leveraging their business. So that had never been done before where you can take a loan and pay down personal debt because, you know, a lot of entrepreneurs, especially black entrepreneurs, leverage their credit a lot of times to help sustain their business because we don't come from a place of generational wealth. We don't come from a place, we haven't even had the luxury of building generational wealth when you think about coming out of 50 years of, of being free. You know, it's, you know, we don't really come from that place. So a lot of times we leverage on this, we leverage the system to sustain us. And there's so much red tape and, and barriers that are established that it really puts us a lot of times in, in compromising, you know, situations. Sorry. Sorry. So I'm on my phone, so someone just tried to call iPhone. But I would say the community loan fund is one thing. I think that was a pretty huge feat for us. I also pushed legislation through city council to prohibit the discrimination against Section 8 vouchers, which alleviated the concentration of poverty in our black and brown communities. I mean, I did a bunch of stuff, but those, I'm proud of that too. I'm, I'm announcing a task force next week on Tuesday. It's, um, it's about a 57-member task force that's made up of community organizers, activists, influencers, celebrities, elected officials, judges. I mean, it's like a huge conglomerate of people and the goal of the task force is to dismantle the systemic oppression that has been contributing to our black and brown communities. So we're looking at criminal justice reform, public administration, public safety. We're looking at economics, access to capital for businesses. It's, it's just incredible. So that's announcing on Tuesday. That's something great. I started a community engagement task force to cure the disenfranchisement rate in black and brown communities. I brought in QuickTrip who funded over $100,000 towards the community engagement task force. So we, we've been, we've been, we've been working.
Yeah, and clearly not sleeping.
Definitely not sleeping. No sleep over here.
No sleep.
No sleep. No sleep. So.
What kind of advice would you give young people coming up that are interested in doing the things that you are doing for their community, but not really sure like where the path is? Because like I said, education isn't that great and it doesn't really tell us the best ways to get involved in the communities and get on your city councils and things like that. So what kind of advice would you give the kids?
I, I would tell them to do their research, you know? Google is a powerful tool if leveraged properly. And I know that from my own experience, you know? And I would say, find out your neighborhood associations. Find out about any organizations that are, that are active in the civic process when it comes to local government. Find out who your city council member is. Find out who your mayor is. Get involved because that, let me tell you, growing up Jehovah Witness, as, as, as appreciative as I am of the faith and, and the values that have been instilled within me, because we did not participate in the political process, I had no idea what a neighborhood association was when I was running for city council. I didn't know, you know, who my city council members were. I just knew that I wanted to affect change and I think that's what a lot of young people are experiencing, experiencing right now as the consciousness in the world continues to elevate. You have young people that are like, hey, I want to be involved, but they're, they've been so disengaged from the process. Or should I say disenfranchised from the process? Because I believe the disenfranchisement that we see across the country is institutionalized and it's intentional. Because if you can keep the people kind of, you know, divided and you can keep them segregated from the civic process and you can keep them divided from, you know, those that are a part of the process, then, you know, you never have them coming together. you know, those that are a part of the process, then, you know, you never have them coming together and, and understanding their true force together. Because if everyone was civically engaged, we wouldn't have a Donald Trump in office. We wouldn't have to worry about some of the, the things that we experience in this country. We wouldn't have to worry about fighting for hate crime bill, you know? We wouldn't have to worry about those things because the people in office would be a reflection of who we are, a reflection of our communities, a reflection of our values and belief systems.
I mean, you're doing so many great things. Where do you see Antonio Brown in five years?
So it's so interesting, right? Since I got it, let me just tell y'all how, how amazing God is for a minute. You know, I've never been an activist a day in my life. Um, I've always been an advocate. I've always advocated on behalf of our communities, but I've never been an activist. And when God, like when God, God has been a factor in my life, my entire life. I have been connected to God since I was like three years old and I've always been connected to Source. And wherever God has taken me, I've never questioned and I've always followed my spirit. I had absolutely no interest in city council at all. Um, I didn't want to do the work, you know, I just didn't believe in, 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 in the idea of city council. I believed it was convoluted with politics and, you know, I be- I believe that you spent so much time playing in politics that you lose sight of, of the people. But God led me and moved my spirit to get into politics. I never had a plan for it, but I answered the call and I won. And lo and behold, I became a city councilman. And now I understand self reflecting, I realize why God put me in this position. Because in, in order to dismantle a construct like government, in order to dismantle a construct like the institution of systemic racism and oppression and, you know, all of the other injustices that have contributed to the conditioning of black and brown communities. In order to dismantle that, you have to be in the inside. You have to understand how a construct is built in order to know how to break it down and build it back up. So me coming into Atlanta city council, yes, it was to do the good work and to help support and, and provide an infrastructure for the district in which I represent. But it was also to understand, you know, a lot of, um, the sorry.
We know you're popular. We know you're a man in, in need, so it's all good.
Hey, but I'm with the quickness. I'm hitting the clock. Um, no, I was just gonna say, you know, in order to dismantle a construct that again, I call it the, the construct of the religious era that is now is what is being dismantled. And you notice that more people are moving towards spirituality and moving away from the era of religion that was built on this idea that the institution of God was inside of a man-made institution. And the reality is the institution of God is from within us. That is where you find God is from within yourself. And I say all this to say, I remember there was a crowd coming down my street, uh, maybe about four weeks ago of hundreds of young people and they were a little disorganized. And I noticed that the local police was getting ready to try to intercede them. And I was looking at it from my balcony and literally God spoke through my spirit and was like, go down there, help them, get, get in front of this and, and don't allow the police to disrupt them. So I literally ran from my apartment, um, on 17th street all the way to like two miles. Got in front of it, got between the police and the young people, completely provided them structure to be able to, to, to be able to assemble peacefully. And we marched that day seven miles peacefully, no issues. And from that moment, I held a march at the Ebenezer Church. Um, the, the infamous Ebenezer church where the late Dr., uh, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Um, wa- was the pastor and we held a march there that, that had over 3,000 people in attendance with elected officials. And from that march, I met Little Baby. And from meeting Little Baby, I was able to bring them into this social justice movement that spurred a voter registration rally where we were able to register over a thousand people to vote and he performed and was able to lift up the young people to understand their civic responsibility. So I say that all of this to say, I've never had an agenda through this whole process. And I think that's what, that's what our elected officials should be a reflection of. There should be no political agenda. You should allow your spirit and God to lead you to where you want to go. And understanding that, you know, when, when, you know, when God gives you vision, God also gives you provision. You know, and, and, and you know, that provision is what allows you to understand what is necessary in that moment to be able to move your lives forward. And, you know, I've been, so many people have said, hey, what are you gonna do next? Do you want to run for mayor? Do you want to run for governor? What do you want to do next? And I'm like, listen, I have no political agenda. I, I didn't even want to be a city council person if you want to be, you know, a hundred percent clear. And I damn sure, I damn sure didn't want to go marching 77 miles. Hell, I'm skinny already. You know, I didn't want to do any of those things. But God led my spirit and I didn't, I didn't question God and I followed my spirit. So wherever God is leading me, I'm unsure. You know, God hasn't revealed it to me yet of where, where I'm going. But I do believe that, um, I, I do believe it, it's to address, um, generational change in this country, um, and to be able to have the conversations that we really don't have. I think one of the, the, the glories of me being on council is that people, some people have identified me as a rebel or someone that has come, come in and, and really like shaking things up. But what I've truly done is dismantled an antiquated system that did not serve the people. And in the process of dismantling the system, we are reconstructing it and building it back up. Where again, I'm gonna say the people are the table and elected officials are being invited to the table instead of how it has been for, you know, centuries where, you know, the people have been just the side effect of the conditioning of the politics in this country.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you, Antonio, because I'm gonna say that you really do need to be at the sermon on Sunday because brother, I will go, I'm gonna be the first one in that row. You ma- you make me want to get off this phone right now.
Glad, I'm just glad God didn't put me in the church house.
But all jokes aside, we're, you know, we, 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 we're seeing some, some change because change is needed right now, right? But where do we go as black people from here?
Where do we go? I, I, I believe we, we have to first start by coming together. I don't know if either of you saw the post that I made on Twitter a few days ago, it's about four days ago. There were two young black men, um, that shot each other in my district. Now I represent some of the poorest communities in all of Atlanta. And these two young people, um, you know, they shot each other. Um, I don't know the entirety of the details, but it was sad because one was left on the streets to die and had been there for, for over an hour. And they, the residents had to come and put a sheet over him. And it really broke my heart, you know, because it made me ask myself like, what am I fighting for? Like, you know, over these last few weeks, I've made so many sacrifices. You know, um, you know, I put my own health in, in, in risk in, in the context of being out here protesting and marching and organizing, um, not eating, not sleeping because this means so much to me. You know, and, and then, you know, I get that message that there's a young black man laying in the streets of my district dead because of a disagreement with another young black man. And the reality is, is that, you know, I tell people all the time, before you can go fix somebody else's house, you gotta fix your own house. And we gotta fix our community. We gotta fix our black and brown communities. We gotta stop being divided amongst ourselves. And that's also including the, the brown community that identify sometimes as the immigrants in this country that identify sometimes as the Mexicans and the Spanish people and the Latino people in this country. We can't be divided amongst ourselves. We're all fighting for the same thing.
Absolutely.
The Latino community is just as oppressed as the African-American community. And the reality is we are stronger when we are together. So we gotta fix our own home. We gotta, we gotta address our own racism within our own, you know, uh, within our own people. And, you know, whether that is you lighter than me or you darker than me or you, you got more money than me or you come from a different community than me, all of that to me is just unnecessary. And, and it, and, and we allow these folks in these positions of power to fund these organizations that have been instituted to keep us divided, you know? And you have, you have fashions of people that fund these, you know, these, these organizations that are rooted in our communities. And they fund them with the mere intent of segregating the people because they realize black and brown communities divided have no power. Black and brown communities together can run a country, can, can change a generation, can do things that have never been done before in this country.
Absolutely. I mean, listen, I'm inspired. Let's go. Let's go right now. Let's do this. And I could talk to you for hours and hours and hours and hours. Uh, I know we can't keep you and we gotta wrap the show up. But where can, where can people find you that watched this interview and want to know more about what you're doing? And, and all of the great things that you are making happen right now?
Yeah, they can, uh, follow me on Twitter and, and Instagram. It's Antonio Is Muted. Um, you know, they can keep up with me there. I post quite frequently. And, um, I'm pretty engaged as far as with the people that, uh, you know, engage me on social media. So they can find me there.
Okay. And Courtney, where can fans find you?
I'm all over social media at Stuart Starlet.
And you can find me at Darryl Kristen on every social media platform. And, uh, Antonio, man, honestly, man, very, very been a, an honor and pleasure to talk to you, brother. You got, you are doing some big things and I can't wait to see what bigger changes that you continue to do and where your career goes. So come back anytime, uh, once we get past this COVID. Maybe if you're in LA, you can come to the studio. You can do an in-studio, uh, interview there as well. But, uh, keep doing what you're doing. Keep doing what you're doing, man. I'm calling you when I come to Atlanta.
Keep getting my city right. Yes.
It was such a pleasure. Thank you both for having me. It really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
On behalf of our BHL staff, we would like to thank you for tuning into Black Hollywood Live, the world's first digital broadcast network devoted entirely to urban entertainment and pop culture. Check out our Black Hollywood Live YouTube page for even more great programming and amazing content. And be sure to subscribe and like our channel when you do. I'm your BHL host, Nakia Monae, and you can find me on all social media at Kiki Boom Boom or at Black Hollywood Live. Black Hollywood Live, Hollywood redefined.